City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
And Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, please press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain open until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will begin tonight's special meeting with one closed session item. Item number one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. Now, before we convene to close session, city clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this subject?
Madam Mayor, I have not received any request to speak on the closed session.
All right, then I will close public comment on this item and we will convene to Conference Room C. All right, we are back and we're moving on to item number two of our study session, review of city pools, current status, assessments, and future plans. And I believe we're going to be joined by Joanne McGrini, Director Parks and Recreation, and Matt Fabry, Director Public Works. I'm right?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Again, Joanne McGrini, Parks and Rec Director, joined by Director Fabry on the current status, assessments, and future plans of the city pools. So, we first wanted to go over the questions for consideration before the presentation begins so that you can start thinking about all the things we're going to show you. So, I'm going to read in detail some of these questions because we weren't able to fit everything on the screen. But number one is, does city council support taking the necessary steps to make immediate term improvements at both Joinville and Martin Luther King Jr. pools to allow for operation of aquatics programming in the summer of 2025? This will require an appropriation of $500,000 from reserves as there is not existing budget to implement these improvements. Costs may increase as additional critical issues may surface as improvements are being made. Number two, does council support scoping the necessary upgrades to extend the useful life of the Joinville facility to coincide with the remainder of the city's lease period for the adjacent parkland, which is 2040? This will require an appropriation of $200,000 from reserves as there is not existing budget to perform this scoping assessment. As further appropriation likely over $2 million is anticipated to implement the necessary upgrades. And then finally, number three, does council support initiating a community engagement and visioning process for upgrading the MLK facility to include pool renovations and upgrades to serve as the city's resilience center? This will require an appropriation of $200,000 from reserves for this effort as there is not existing budget to perform this engagement visioning process. Initial estimates, as detailed, are approximately $19 million for full-scale renovation of the pool and addition of resilience features. Okay, so we're going to start off by showing you some photos and explaining where these two pools exist. And so, this first picture is a map of Joinville. This is a standalone aquatics facility in the Shoreview neighborhood located at 2111 Keigho Avenue. And the city, as you can see on this map, has a lease agreement with the San Mateo Foster City School District for parcel B, which is directly above the outlined red area that encompasses the tennis courts, picnic area, as well as the ball field. And then, we utilize, to the top-left corner, also parcel B, which is the turf fields and the gymnasium out of Bayside Middle School. There are two pools at the Joinville facility built in 1968. Depicted here is the smaller teaching pool that has a depth of two to three and a half feet. It's very popular for instructional swim lessons as well as our camp summer swim days. And then here you can see the six-lane 25-meter competitive pool, which is at four and a half to six feet deep. So typically, public pools expenses far exceed the revenues gained. Public pools are more than a nice amenity to supplement community recreation. They enhance quality of life, providing opportunities for residents to learn to swim. By providing swim lessons, we may be able to reduce the number of drownings, particularly in underserved communities. It also provides access to the community to get relief from the heat. For the fiscal year 2022-2024 span, Joinville Center averaged $68,000 in revenue with an average of $256,000 in operational costs. And over the past three years, Joinville Pool has shown consistent usage, particularly among youth swimmers. Even with the large number of lessons offered at the Joinville Swim Center each summer, there is strong unmet demand with an average of 600 people on our waitlist for group swim lessons. At Joinville, our recreational swim attendance grew from 505 in 2023 to 597 in 2024, and adult participation has remained relatively stable. This rec swim numbers also include attendance for our summer weekly camp swim day. So on this slide, we are depicting the Martin Luther King Pool, which is connected to the community center in North Central Neighborhood. It is also an outdoor aquatic facility. So depicted here is the five-lane 25-yard pool that is four feet to nine feet in depth. And this facility was built in 1969. And here is the second smaller waiting pool, two to three feet deep. This is a much smaller dimension than the training pool over at the Joinville Swim Center and is not as functional to program. So the MLK Pool continues along similar lines as the Joinville Swim Center for trends. Over the last three years, MLK has averaged about $48,000 in annual revenues with $232 in annual expenses. This leaves an average delta of $184,000 for cost of operation. I think it's important to note, by upgrading the pool infrastructure, this will help reduce the operating costs and they will allow us to stay open longer as well to provide more programming and allow for rentals. So the Martin Luther King Pool has similar waitlist levels for group swim lessons, averaging 630 people on the waitlist each year of operations. So again, just pretty consistent across the board as far as usage goes. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Director Fabry to describe the current state of the pools, assessment, and proposed immediate short and long-term plans.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Matt Fabry, Public Works Director. I'm going to talk first about the Joinville facility and just show some pictures about the conditions at the pool. And I think in general, as we've seen with a lot of our aging infrastructure, the pools are not in great shape. This is examples of some of the problems within the pool itself in terms of the cracks within the plastering inside the pool, as well as cracks on the deck that become an issue in terms of safety, in terms of people walking on the deck. This is other examples of problems with similar things within the pool and on the deck. And so, we had both the pools assessed, and I'll talk about the King Center separately. But for the Joinville, we had ELS architects come out and take a look at things, did a full assessment of what the pools are, and they came up with different levels of priority improvements that they recommended be made. Priority one improvements were improvements that they feel are absolutely necessary to be made, whereas priority two improvements are more in the nice-to-have category. This is a summary of sort of the priority one and two. The staff report that was provided to you includes the full list of all the priority one and two improvements. The costs that were included in the ELS report that was attached to the agenda package details sort of the construction costs alone for these improvements. And then we've added on some of the soft costs that go along with those in terms of project and construction management, design, the things that have to happen beyond just the construction piece of it. And so that brings the cost of the full improvements at the Joinville Swim Center, including priority one and priority two, to just over $14 million. So it's important to recognize that this is the cost that is envisioned to do a full like-for-like replacement of the facility, but there would be a brand-new facility that would last us for another 50 to 60 years. And that will be contrasted with what we'll talk about in terms of one of the questions that we're asking you in terms of if we only want to go for a shorter period of time in terms of extending the useful life. So now we'll move on to the MLK Pool, and I think we're going to try some technology wizardry here and show a video. Standby. I guess while that's being brought up, we're going to hopefully show a video that shows the image in the left picture. Here we go. So this was taken, I think, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. So you can see the water, hopefully you can see that, the water bubbling up through the crack in the deck. And so this is an example of where we have cracked pipe underneath the deck. I think it's a return line from the pool that's got water coming out through the deck. So this is the kind of situation we have at both the King Pool, and we have a similar situation in a different location at the Joinville Pool. So these are some of the, you know, serious, immediate challenges that we have with these pools due to the age of the infrastructure and the challenges that we face. So we'll move back. Great. So similar challenges at the King Pool, we'll move on to the next. This is showing the filtration system that has a hole with, you can see the water shooting out of it. And then we've got a pump pit that has challenges in terms of it being a confined space in terms of access and entry that makes things difficult for our staff to be able to get in there and maintain things. So these are things that also need to be corrected at the King Pool. So similar to the Joinville Pool, we had an assessment done at the King Facility, and these are priority one and two improvements. Built into this summary includes some of the improvements that are related to being a resilience center. And so the cost for this is larger, includes partly larger because of the cost to do some of the resilience center features. But again, this would be for a new facility that would be, you know, 50- to 60-year lifespan. So this one is estimated at approximately $19 million versus Joinville at $14 million. So in terms of immediate and short-term plans for Joinville, we recommend that we move forward with emergency repairs, including replastering of these critical cracks. The question that Director McGrini asked at the beginning was in terms of would the council support allocating $500,000 for the immediate repairs? So this is basically split between the Joinville and the King Facility. So you see the $250,000 here. And then, following summer 2025, so this is emergency repairs, just to get us to the point where we can open these facilities for programming in summer of 2025, which is in question right now whether we could even do that if we don't make these improvements. So assuming that we do those improvements after summer of 2025, then we would want to move forward with looking at some of the critical code compliance upgrades. That includes replastering, separate filtrations for the two pools. Right now, we're grandfathered in in terms of a single filtration system that serves both pools. Current codes require that ultimately we would have to separate that and have two separate filtrations for both pools and looking at upgrades to the changing rooms. So if we looked at just trying to extend the useful life of this facility that would coincide with the lease for the adjacent parkland, which is 2040, so another 15 years or so, we think it's likely, you know, $2 million plus that would be required to make some of these critical improvements just to get that 15-year life extension. So what we've been asking for the council's feedback tonight is whether council would support an allocation of funding of $200,000 is what our estimate is to do the scoping of that work that would need to happen to figure out exactly, you know, how much that would cost and get going on the process for moving forward on those sorts of upgrades. And in terms of the King Pool, same thing. It's $250,000 is what we're estimating in terms of making the necessary emergency repairs, including replacing the sand filter, which we actually have purchased a new sand filter, it just has not been installed. So it would be really, you know, installing that new sand filter and replacing a chemical pump to keep pools operational that hopefully would get us through potentially the next two summers for the King Pool. The King Pool, if we're unable to open that one in time, then Parks Department would be looking at whether or not we could rent San Mateo High School Pool for summer aquatic programming. And the cost of that is approximately $100,000 to $250,000 in terms of being able to do that. And there's been initial discussions that Director McGrini could talk about in terms of conversations around that topic, but hopefully we could make improvements to get the pool open and not have to go down that path. And then in terms of long-term plans, I think with Joinville, there needs to be some strategic discussions about the long-term future of the facility, recognizing that in 2040, the lease is up on that adjacent parkland and that may not be a park available to the city anymore if the school district decides to do something different with that. And so I think that's part of the discussion is how long into the future do we need to think about these pools? And then, I think with that facility, that facility is more functional in terms of the larger training pool that Director McGrini talked about that works better in terms of being able to use that for lessons for kids and then having the larger pool that can continue to be available for lap swimming at the same time. But the challenge that we have, as was highlighted in terms of our cost of operation and the amount of revenue is that we only operate three months out of the year. And so, we'd be looking at potentially getting year-round aquatic programming and potentially looking at having a contract operator that could provide that programming and also help maintain the facility. With the MLK Community Center and Pools, I think we'd be looking in the long term of establishing this as a resilience center. Part of the key features of why this is a good facility as a resilience center is it already has showers, which is a sort of a key piece of being able to have somewhere that people could go in an emergency is having those facilities there. We don't have that condition at all of our other facilities. We did get a federal earmark of $850,000 that can go towards that effort. It's still a process, although it's been allocated to the city, we still have a process that we have to go through to actually access the funds. And so what we'd recommend to the council is considering an allocation of $200,000 that would get us started on a community engagement and visioning process to figure out where we want to go in the long term with that facility and can look at some of the issues, you know, in terms of, you know, we have an existing facilities assessment that's underway, and so we could pull into that process. What does the facility assessment say for that King Center in terms of the current condition of the facilities and look at some of those longer-term questions? So again, we'll bring back to the questions. The first question is, does, you know, getting direction from council in terms of does council support taking steps to make immediate term improvements at both pools for summer 2025 programming? This would require future appropriation approval by council. We're recommending $500,000. That would be what we think it would cost split between the two pools to do those improvements. Second question is, does council support scoping steps to extend the useful life of Joinville to coincide with the lease of the parkland in 2040? So that would be a process that would be less than the $14 million that was recommended in the ELS study that would be a full, you know, redo that would give us another 60 years. This would be a smaller scale set of improvements to get us through those 15 years. We think it'll be about $200,000 to do that scoping process. And then the future appropriation that would come out of that that likely would be $2 million plus for those upgrades. And then the third question is, does council support initiating a community engagement and visioning process to upgrade the MLK facility to include pool renovations and serve as the resilience center? We're also asking for $200,000 to go along with that or recommending that to get going on that community engagement and visioning process with initial estimates of $19 million based on the assessment that was done in terms of, you know, getting the pool completely redone, improvements to the locker rooms, and building in the resilience center features with part of that. So I think that concludes our presentation and we'll be happy to take questions. In addition to Director McGrini and I, we have staff online from our Facilities Department. We also have Dave Massington from ELS that's here in the audience that can help answer questions about any of the facility-related pieces. And then his colleague, Michelle, is online and she's focused on pools. So if there's very specific pool-related questions, she would probably be the person we'd turn to to answer those.
Great. Thank you very much to both of you. Let us now open up public comment on this item.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, I've received two requests to speak in chambers. As of right now, I do not have any requests to speak in our virtual environment. If you wish to speak on this item, please either provide me with the yellow request to speak slip, or in our virtual environment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. We will be announcing the name of our last speaker on this item, so we'll just give you a few moments to let us know if you wish to speak on this item. Madam Mayor, that is two requests to speak, and both in chambers, so per council adopted rules and procedures, that would be three minutes per speaker. So our two speakers in chambers will be Lisa Tealer, followed by Charles Hansen.
Good evening. Mayor Diaz-Nash, Vice Mayor Newsom, City Council members Lee Hedges, Lorraine, and City Manager and Staff. My name is Lisa Tealer. I'm the Executive Director of the Bay Area Community Health Advisory Council, also known as BAC-HAC, and a Coastline Fellow for the San Francisco Foundation's Neighborhood Fellowship Program, where each year 12 neighborhoods are selected for a five-year, $300,000 investment, and one of those is North Central San Mateo. This cohort of fellows are made of residents and leaders that care about this community and want to see and work towards the King Center, meeting the needs of the community. As many of you know, BAC-HAC was founded in North Central by long-term resident and community leader Gloria Brown, focused on eliminating health disparities in underserved communities like North Central. I appreciate the council has devoted time and energy for the study session of the two pools in need of repair. However, the King Pool is just one area that reflects the lack of investment in the King Center and North Central San Mateo as a whole. I would strongly recommend that the council commit to a comprehensive design to look at the true needs of revitalizing the King Center and not just the pool and changing room, and review the entire King Center as a potential community hub and resilience center for its community and the city. This is the type of investment that is long overdue and greatly needed. The potential benefit of a fully restored community center is immeasurable and can be fully leveraged by making this investment. Let's not be penny wise, but pound foolish. I end with a Dr. King quote, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent over the things that matter. Please do not be silent about the investment needed in North Central and the true vision of the King Center." Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Charles Hansen.
Good evening, Mayor Nash, Council members. My name is Dr. Charles Hansen. I'm the Chief Program Officer at Peninsula Family Service, where we service many of the families in North Central. I am also a Coastline Fellow, and I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. The King Pool, like the King Center as a whole, reflects years of underinvestment that have limited the potential to fully service the neighborhood, yet it also represents an incredible opportunity. An opportunity to create a revitalized, welcoming space for recreation, connection, and growth. Repairing the pool is an important, necessary first step, but we shouldn't stop there. With thoughtful planning and investment, the King Center can be transformed into a vibrant hub that supports families, youth, and seniors in meaningful ways. It has the potential to provide expanded services and programs that reflect the needs and aspirations of the North Central community and its residents. Addressing the pool's neglect while considering broader upgrades would ensure the space meets the community needs for future, excuse me, for future years to come. Thank you for your leadership and for considering the opportunity to invest in the North Central Pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you. I will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I honestly feel emotional seeing the condition of our, of our pools, and especially our King Center and our King Pool. My children learned to swim in that pool, as did many, many of my neighbors' children and many of the children in this community. That pool has saved lives. And I thought, I want to take some time actually to talk about some of the history that I know in, as in regard to the King Center and the King Pool specifically. It wasn't always the case that our pools were only open seasonally for a handful of weeks. We used to have a year-round pool in North Central. We used to provide year-round programming and essential life skills programs to our young people that saved lives. And sadly, it has been so many years since that has been true that it is lost, that institutional memory has been entirely lost. Now, it is a foregone conclusion in fact that when my kids are attending swim class, they are repeatedly required to exit the pool because the filtration system has become so terrible that we have to manually test the water to make sure that it, that it is safe to continue swimming. So the very limited accessibility that we have to this program is further curbed by the condition of our filtration system, which poses risks to the users. I, I can't help but surface the irony of our community uplifting our, and espousing our values of diversity and inclusivity, and naming the King Center and the King Pool after one of the most important civil rights leaders in our country, and letting that community asset be squandered through, into a state of disrepair. It is embarrassing for our community. It's truly embarrassing that our, that the conditions of our facilities have become so terrible that they are on the brink of closure. I saw this coming, and I saw it coming not just last week when this, this agenda was published. I've been working on this issue since 2016, when I served as a volunteer on the facilities' strategic master plan. 2016, we led a community-wide facilities master planning process and adopted a strategic plan. That strategic planning process replaced another master planning process that had not been funded or implemented and had gone stale. And now, in 2024, look at the condition, look at the condition of our community assets. We are disrespecting the namesake of Dr. King. That's what's happening. So I, I believe, I, I hope, I hope that this council, this ask before us is an easy ask. Do we do the most immediate Band-Aid repairs to keep our facilities running, hopefully for another one to two years? What I ask of my council is that we expand the scope of, of the $200,000, and maybe commit more if necessary, that will fold in a design process for a resiliency center, take into account the adopted strategic plan and the input that we already got through a robust community process, that we listen to the years of community input from the North Central community and citywide that are asking for year-round aquatics, are asking for childcare centers that are unlicenseable in our own community centers because of the way that they're built and configured. I, I would say, we cannot pretend ignorance. We do not, we, we, we cannot sit up here and say, we don't know what the community really wants, we need more input. We know what the community wants, and we know what the community needs, and we're now at a crossroads where we can commit to further study, or we can commit to a design with a community input process. We can commit to the beginnings of a plan that will be resourced. I am, I'm honestly scared. I'm honestly scared that this council could pass by this crossroads moment that we are in right now to commit real resources to a design alternative that would get us to a, to a building, to an improvement plan that will actually come to fruition before this facility has to close altogether. I don't think that, or I want to make clear that I don't think that the way that we're planning to scope the resiliency center alone and, and separating out the conversation of the whole, the entirety of the King Center is doing justice to our community. It's redundant three times over. I think that there's much more efficiency in terms of the time spent from the community's perspective and in terms of the cost savings to actually look, take, let's hire consultants that can actually synthesize and build on the work that's already taken place. We have an adopted facilities strategic plan that contemplates what, what the needs are and what the desires are for the community and the King Center. In 2016, we determined that the most important, highest need investment in terms of our facilities was the King Center. In 2016, that was determined. And now, we're coming back with, oh, do we, do we want to do a $200,000 emergency investment? Do we want to do a $200,000 design that only looks at this tiny fraction of possibility for the whole facility? This is a moment for, this is a moment where we can actually take action and expand the scope to address the true need and the true vision of our community, and do right by Dr. King. Thank you.
Thank you.
I participated in the ad hoc committee that Sheila Kinseyian set up to look at all of the facilities, and it was very clear to me in going through both the King Center and Joinville how bad of shape the pools were in. I want to do whatever we can do for both of those to get them up and running for as long as possible. Both of these pools are in priority equity neighborhoods with children who oftentimes need things to do in the summertime without parental guidance, but have local people on because their parents are off working usually to pay the bills. So I think it's so important to make sure not only that they're working for 2025, but out to 2040. Whatever we have to do to get the funding, we need to do. I'm going to say yes to all three of the items you have up with, with an emergency to get them done. I don't need to go on and on about it, I just think it's so important that we get it done, and as well as getting the, the King Center up to what it should be. And I know that's a huge task, and I know we're short of funds, but let's try to find them.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you, through the mayor. Directors McGreeney and or Fabry. I guess I'd like to just ask if you have any thoughts or response to some of what Councilwoman Lee was describing with regard to the, an opportunity to incorporate more of recommendations from previous strategic plans into the, the current agenda, or if not, why, why not, or maybe just a little more about the, the thinking with the, the current trajectory with the plan that's laid out before us?
Sure. I think that the intention of the pool assessments and the resilience center assessment was not to leave out potential upgrades to the King Center. I think that we just were trying to get pricing associated with those things directly. I think that the intention is to ensure that we make appropriate upgrades and take into consideration those other opportunities at the center for improvements, to make it a more welcoming environment, you know, there are technology upgrades that are needed. And, and I think that you'll see that as we move forward in recreation, trying to make multipurpose spaces available so that they're as flexible as possible is something that I think that we're intending to include in the project and not leave it out. So I, I hope you don't interpret that by the assessment that was attached to this, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and is it fair to say that should council decide to go ahead with the, the questions before us today with some direction that, you know, of support for continuing to do what we can to find, you know, the 19 million that may be required to renovate and improve King Center to a resilient center, that we might be able to incorporate some of what had been learned through the previous processes at, at that, at that time in the not-too-distant future in a next step?
Happy to jump in here, I'll excuse you, I'm City Manager. So to your, to your question, Councilmember Lorraine, what we're looking at is currently, as Director Fabry just mentioned, we're doing a facility assessment, and that will look at the King Center itself, and looking at whether or not a modernization effort can take place there, or if has to be completely scrapped and bulldozed to the ground and start over. There's big costs between both of those, and that's a major policy decision for the next council when, when we cross that road. Right now, what we're looking at is the pool facilities, in order to just extend the life and it's patchwork basically, we've already been working off of shoestring and gum for over 25 years, and we're continuing to do that right now. And my belief as a City Manager for the City of San Mateo is that our residents and our community deserve top-notch facilities. And so this is that first step of really working to make that investment. Now, if we look at what Councilmember Lee is asking for, to look for a more encompassing resiliency center plus a pool, it's a lot more than $200,000 I need from an ask from the council in order to start that design. And albeit, yes, we would utilize a lot of what the community input we received in the past, that's what we'd hand off to a consultant, but there's something to say, that's eight years ago, and you still need to engage the community now. That's with anything that we do, there still is this point in time that we would need to still effectively go out and, and conduct outreach to the neighborhood and to the community over in North Central. And we're only talking about one facility right here, we also have Joinville Pool at the same time, and so that's also something that, you know, the needs are, the needs are there too as well. And I don't take it lightly, when you look at just overall on the screen today, there's $900,000 in asks for basically taking your reserves of rainy day fund, this is that rainy day that I'm asking the council for direction and recommendation so that we can, we're picking our spot, we're picking our point in time to really work on a trajectory and position ourselves to make generational upgrades for this community. The time has come and gone, you're looking at a whole, you know, 50, 60 years of these facilities that haven't had the level of, I'd say, preventative, proactive preventative maintenance recently, and so that's something that we'll also have to look at from an operations and maintenance standpoint to make that proactive investment upfront to protect our investments. This is multi-million dollars, this is no joke here of what we're looking at. And so I guess back to your point, Councilmember Lorraine, if we're looking at folding in the resiliency center, it'd be more than $200,000 to work on an agreement to really engage the community and start the work on designing. That was just for the pool and for the locker rooms, and a little bit, I believe, of interior of the King Center specifically, but that could be first phase of a multi-phase approach. We still need the needs, the facility assessment to be able to tell us our options of whether or not we can, you know, find the way to utilize the existing community center and make modernization efforts, or if we have to look at scraping it and start from the beginning all over again. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, I believe it does. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, city manager. And I think that will conclude my questions. At this point, I think I will share that I would say yes to the three questions before us tonight. And, you know, with the understanding that this is immediate rainy day funding and a rainy day to keep our pools open and operating now, which is top priority. And with the understanding that there will be a facility assessment to come that appears to be the next most important step to get a sense of where we are today with a number of facilities, many of which are aging, many of which have issues. The parking structure at Second and El Camino comes to mind. And of course, a lot of what we may hear from later from Director Fabry in terms of stormwater infrastructure. We have a lot of needs and I support the current trajectory and think we do have an opportunity to get back on track. It'll be many steps from here. But I believe that if we remain vigilant through each step, that we can turn this around. And those are my comments.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
Sure. Thank you for your presentation. A couple of questions. On the map of Joinville, I had heard that we owned the tennis courts, but is it in fact the case that we do not? That's parcel B for Joinville map.
Yeah, I'm just, I know that we built them after we got into the agreement, but my understanding is that that property does not belong to us, that we lease it, but I can look further into that.
Thank you. Have we, I know the answer already, but I'm saying it out loud. I think we need to come back to the San Mateo Foster City School District to figure out long-term what the options are to acquire the property. I think if the property is not going to be acquirable, then, you know, we still need to do whatever we can to keep it feasible and running for the next 15 years until our contract ends. But if they intend to put affordable housing or something else there in 15 years, then I think we need to start also at this point, looking at another site, maybe like Seal Point, for example, or somewhere else to be putting a future pool. I know from talking to some peers at the City of Foster City, the City of Foster City doesn't have a pool facility. And I know that San Bruno just broke ground with their new pools and recreation center that goes with it. One of the things I learned from that is that some of the surrounding cities around San Bruno participated in financially contributing to the project for the San Bruno Pool. And in turn for that, they get, they get the same rate as San Bruno residents do to use those facilities. So I'd be curious, and I know, you know, a little bit that Foster City might be interested in, in an opportunity like that. So at some point, if we could, you know, either retrofit Joinville because we can buy that property or identify a second location to replace it with in 15 years, we could look at partnering with surrounding cities that don't have pools and offer that. That's just some feedback. I know we've also talked about, and you talked about, operating the pool year-round and outsourcing that. My wife worked for one of the companies that used to do that for about three years in HR. And I know that that can, even though it costs more, it actually ends up making it something that drives revenue to the pools. So having the pools opened 12 months of the year instead of three or four can make it be net neutral, meaning it breaks even as opposed to costing us. I was curious on your bar graphs, when you have total rec and total swim lessons combined, were those, were those two independent of each other? Meaning the total number of users is, I've got to add the two together? Or the people taking swim lessons are just part of the other?
So yeah, we try to represent the number of people that are coming to pay for lessons, whether that be group lessons, private lessons, adult, children. And then there's the recreational swim aspect where you're just dropping in and using the pool when it's open for, and available for drop-in use. And that also incorporates our swim camp days, so it's more of a drop-in basis. But we wanted to show that there's different user groups and that they're both, you know, they both have high numbers.
So it's possible that there's some crossover with the two groups, but there's also some that are, might be independent of the other?
Correct.
Meaning the combined number is somewhat higher?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right, that's all the questions I have. My, my input is that I support all three of these initiatives. And taking it one step further, I agree with my fellow council members that I'd like to make sure that we look at not just repairing the MLK pool, but actually repairing or possibly replacing the MLK rec center as well and making it a full-fledged facility. That's all the feedback I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, both of you, for your presentation. And thank you for the public comment, really very important and please stay very, very engaged. I'm not going to spend a lot of time because I agree with what has been set up here. And I think realistically that these three recommendations or steps that you're asking for approval on will give us what we need to get going. I very much support the idea of a Resilience Center and a re-envisioning of what MLK should be. But I think we also need to show the community that we're doing our due diligence and our homework. Because if we have to go out for that or for whatever we decide to do with Joinville, that's going to be a lot of money. And we need to show the community that we're doing everything we can to really be as efficient and effective, but also involving them as much as possible. And I love the idea of talking to other cities about opportunities for co-use, any kind of creativity, that's fantastic. And I remember when I was first looking at your presentation and learned, I didn't realize that the two pools opened so close to each other. And my first reaction was, oh my God, what did they do to get two such gorgeous pools open at basically the same time? And I think that should be our goal so that 20 years from now, people look back and say, oh my God, what did they do in order to be able to really transform the recreational use in both these areas at about the same time? So, you know, I would sort of set that as a visionary goal. And that's it. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
I hear that we all share a vision of supporting the King Center. And I would, I would ask councilmembers to please consider, if we don't start the design work for a true comprehensive update of the King Center, including the vision of a Resiliency Center, including the necessary community engagement, when will that happen? When do you think that's going to happen? I legitimately don't know what you're committed to if you won't commit to it now. There is a plan to do a facilities assessment. The facilities assessment is its own analysis that is absolutely required and can be well synchronized with a visioning process. The visioning and design process, including a community input process, is incredibly complimentary and timely if we are already committed to doing a facilities assessment. One of the problems that we've had is that we keep on doing analyses without any plans to fund any execution plan. And those analyses squander resources and time of our community, who show up year after year after year saying, our community pools, our community centers are not meeting community need. So I ask you, what exactly is the timeline you're willing to commit to doing a design if you're not willing to do it now? What is, what is a couple extra hundred thousand dollars in the most opportune window to do a design process when we're already doing a facilities assessment process? When are you committed to actually dedicating the resources to implement and execute against the vision that you have stated? I don't know.
Yes, Councilmember Hedges.
I would ask our city manager, what would it, sorry. What would it cost for us to implement what Councilwoman Lee's saying?
So I'd like our facilities and fleet manager, Stephen Wu, can you jump on virtually? He's on here virtually. How much to, if we were to fold in the full Resiliency Center, MLK building and the pool, what we need? I know I'm putting you on the spot. Is it a couple hundred thousand more?
It might be a couple hundred thousand more to begin with. I think we won't know until we actually develop the scope. And so we obviously have to create the program first before we can get to the scope. So there's a lot of lead work to be done just to find out what we, what we want and what fits there versus just saying, we want something new.
Okay. And the other piece that we also would have to look at is just a financial plan and financial planning because you're looking at just one phase of this, we're looking at $19 million. But when you look at the modernization of the entire facility itself, we won't be able to do that just with our reserves. There has to be, you know, we could do a down payment, kind of like when you buy a house where you put money down, but there's going to have to be some type of financing and we'd probably have, we would, not probably, we would need to look at a future revenue measure in upcoming election cycles in order to pay for this type of facility. And we have a lot of needs at all our facilities across the community. And so I'd ask our finance director, because I only think there's, it's limited on, you want to come up, Karen? It's very limited on what we can. We've still got to preserve our reserves too at the same time and strike that balance.
I just want to remind everyone that this council is contemplating spending $500,000 on historic resource policy that was fast-tracked.
So.
I mean, we have, we have committed resources for RFPs for more than twice the amount that we're talking about right now.
So I think just to our finance director, Karen, can you just talk about just overall, I know that we're looking at our overall reserves that we have that might not be assigned specifically, but I know that we're looking at, can you talk more about how we're trying to look at utilizing some of these funds to pay for these initial capital improvement projects and how that saves us money down the line and that we would have to look at more funding? You want to talk about that a little bit?
In order to build a new community center, the current cost based on our neighboring city is about 50 to 60 million dollars for a community center. And we currently, although we have about $100 million in the general fund reserve, but some of the money is for emergency and operational contingency so we can weather economic cycles. And we also have a lot of money, about $7 million in the housing set aside for affordable housing. About $10 million is already committed to CIP that haven't been transferred out. So the inside balance that's currently sitting in the rainy day reserve, I think it's about less than 50 million. And that's why our city manager mentioned our general fund reserve can potentially put up the down payment. But then if we decided to go with a new community center, we'll definitely need to do public financing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I recall that the staff report specifically cited the congressional grant of $850,000 that Supervisor Nwamile Corzo and I helped acquire. We mobilized over 450 neighbors who spoke in favor of a community investment to support our, our King Center. Four hundred, over 450 community members wrote in talking about how the center has changed their lives. And now, we're nickeling and diming a design process and unwilling to even contemplate increasing a budget over $200,000?
I, before I joined San Mateo, I came from the City of Berlin Game. They just have a brand-new recreation center open. The architecture decide cost for that recreation center, it's about $1.5 million a couple years ago. So in order to have architecture decide for a brand-new recreation center, it's quite a big commitment, have a lot of community outreach and, and the architecture decide have a lot of element to it. So it's not a small commitment. I, I just want to mention that because I know how much it costs to build that recreation center for Berlin Game.
Councilmember Lorraine.
I feel like I'm a little confused because when I look at the question before us tonight, it discusses initiating community engagement and visioning to upgrade the King Facility to include pool renovations and serve as the city's Resilience Center. So can you, I'd like some more understanding of what the difference is between what is being asked for and what is currently before us.
So what I'm assuming Councilwoman Lee's asking for is a complete modernization of the entire center to really look at increasing the useful life and the user effectiveness of today's times moving forward. And that includes the Resiliency Center and the pool as well. What you have in the staff report is looking at upgrading the pool facility and also the locker room facility and kitchen facility, all pieces of a Resiliency Center. But I believe really looking more holistically, including the full, 100% of the community center, 100, you know, the whole, basically the whole facility that you saw, the community center, the pool, the locker rooms, everything, with a new modernization, whether it be a new facility or a modernized facility.
I would say that we can all agree that we do need to do both, right? We can all agree that we need to do both. So my question is, why are we only committing to doing part of it when we know that we have to do both? And that we, that it actually is very important to commit to doing both right now when we are about to get the benefits of a facilities assessment report that will be fresh, right? That can inform the conversation, the community input and the feasibility study, the economic considerations of what a full, comprehensive plan would entail. That's, where I'm getting stuck here now, working since 2016 on this exact issue, is at what point do we actually put the resources into a committed plan that can be delivered on for the entire King Center? That's what, that's what I'm asking.
So, so looking into that, tonight, what I have brought forward is because the pools right now cannot be open this summer. That's why we've put this, staff has worked hard to bring this agenda report forward and talk about the state of the pools and talk about the long-term viability of the pools. So that's what was before the council in this study session. Now, I'm happy to bring back next year, early next year, because that's the next time we meet. At this point, we're going to go through the transition in December. And so I'm happy to bring back an item early next year to look and we can ask staff how much it would cost to do the extra, to really look in. If that's what I see nodding heads on the council to do, happy to bring back that item and start that discussion. And, you know, happy to facilitate that. At this point in time, I have the three questions. That's how we framed it up because we were focusing specifically on our pool facilities. And I hear you, Councilmember Lee, you would have loved to see more holistically incorporate and fold in the entire King Center. And so with that, happy to bring back an item for future discussion and an update to the council so that we have the exact pricing that would be needed in addition to the $200,000. Because we're going to have to come anyways, again, with a contract. And so before we bring any contract back, happy to, you know, bring that update to the council as well. I'm seeing nodding heads.
Yeah, and I think that also would give the community an opportunity to participate in that.
Yeah, they can come out again for that item as well next year, early next year. So I'm going to have to come back regardless. This is just a study session, looking for direction this evening on those three items. But what I'm hearing, I'm seeing nodding heads, but please tell me if I'm inaccurate, I guess, for this council, that you'd like me to bring, you know, go and have Steve Wu look into what it would cost to have that, you know, extra.
I would support your recommendation.
I see one, see two, three, four, five. I have my direction.
So I think the important thing is to find out what it's going to cost, but also it's extremely important that we have these pools operational next summer.
I hear you loud and clear.
Absolutely.
So we're going to have to work, we're going to have to work very fast, starting tomorrow, to make sure that we at least get this short-term fix, get going immediately so that we can open up in June. So I have the direction I need, is that okay, mayor?
Yes, absolutely. And I think we can, it's now 20. And I think we can, it's now 20 of, we will close, close session, or excuse me, the study session, and we will come back at seven o'clock. Thank you, everyone.